Which would include the 7-9 2018 personnel report that's been provided to you.
Sure.
Thank you, Ken.
Second.
Thank you, Orla. Any additional comments, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Good. Consent agenda items are approved. Going on to recognition. Dr. Linsky?
Yes, I would like to introduce, first off, Mr. Jordan Hart. Teachers for us at the high school does a tremendous job with their speech and debate. And he has a student here that I think is going to, we are delighted to have here in attendance, Will Hendrickson, a high school student. Did a tremendous job with the humorous interpretation, I believe, and that Jordan will let you give a little more information on that. But we're just, anytime we have folks, we talk about difference makers, and these are our difference makers here tonight. We kind of combined them here with the performance. And so, Jordan, congratulations on your team performance.
Thank you.
And I'll let you introduce your student and the four jurors.
Sure. Well, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity today to have a student speak and also giving me the opportunity to kind of share on behalf of the students at the high school, kind of the success that we had this past year. This past year, we had about 60 students involved in the speech and debate team. We went to 10 tournaments, and our school was in the top five at seven of those 10 tournaments. And then, we ended up qualifying 13 students to the national competition that was held this past June, June 16 through the 23rd in Fort Lauderdale. And it was, there were 1,200 schools that were in attendance at this tournament, and our school ended up being in the top 40, which is the top 3.5 percent. I'll be presenting this award to Mr. James. We received this award at the national tournament because we're now recognized as a school of honor in the speech events, which was a really exciting accomplishment for our students. At the very beginning of the year, I kind of commissioned all of our students and our coaches to raise the bar, like you commissioned us at the opening session. And I asked our seniors, what is a main goal that you would like to set for the team for this year? And one of the goals that they set was to win our district tournament as a school. And we accomplished that goal. And some of the students independently set out the goal to do extremely well at nationals. And we had one student make it to the final round and perform their speech in front of 3,000 people. I don't think I could have even done that, which is really exciting. And she'll actually be a senior on the team next year, so it's great that we get to still have her. And then, our student that we have presenting today, Will Hendrickson, he has been with the team for four years. And the performance that you're about to see is his humorous interpretation in which he placed third at the state competition this past year. And he also attended nationals in duo interpretation this past year. So, without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Will.
Oh, God. Oh, God.
Sorry.
Oh, God.
Through that door is the next prophet of God. Hello? Oh. Hi. I got this letter telling me to come here today. Garrett. Garrett! Okay. Mr. Garrett Catwell, I would like to be the first to inform you that you have been selected to be the next prophet of God. Do you live your life with purpose? Me neither. I mean, at this point in my life, I'm either going to join the circus or I'm going to run for congress. I mean, either way, I'll be working with clowns, right? Artemis, an angel of God is too struggling to find his purpose. He is tasked to find the next great prophet. However, he is faced with some of humanity's worst. At the end of one of the longest days of the often magical, Artemis soon learns that sometimes our greatest purpose is to do the best for society by sacrificing ourselves in reluctant progress by G.J. Powell. God, like isn't a...
Well, uh, yeah.
I'm Artemis, the angel. You're an angel of God?
Uh, yes.
And God wants me to be a prophet?
Yeah. So, if you'll just sign here.
What's this part here say?
Oh, that's just the death clause.
The death clause?
Everyone dies, Garrett. You're just going to be thrown in front of a subway car, and you'll be conscious for the next 30 seconds as all of your internal organs fall into your legs.
But it's not that bad. Not that bad!
Look, Garrett, that's just a part of it. But you see, humanity needs help. Humanity needs a prophet.
Well, you can tell God that I don't want the job.
Garrett, wait! Oh, God. Oh, God. Oh, God. Oh, God. Oh, God. So, Garrett declined the offer. Yes, I may have mentioned the subway incident.
Find someone else.
Who else? God? God? Oh, no. Oh, I'm gonna need a miracle.
Oh.
Oh, you.
Okay. Through that door is the real next prophet of God. Hello? Hi, I'm Beth!
Hi. You want to be a prophet?
I go to church every single Sunday!
God! Hey, now, just sign here.
This really shows.
Jeff!
My ex-boyfriend, who just broke up with me. Now, with the power of God, I'll make him eat his words!
Oh, my God. Oh, my skin! I don't think I did anything bad to deserve that job.
Okay. Through that door is the real next prophet of God. Hello?
Hello. You look like the type of man who knows the chance of a lifetime when he sees one. I'm Tony Grandin. I'm reading for president.
Oh.
Artemis.
Grandin, you're that crooked senator!
These, those are simply speculations, okay? People are only afraid of the moderate reforms that we bring.
Well, isn't one of your moderate reforms a forced labor program for the elderly?
Forced labor? It'd be valuable employment, okay?
You'd be using them as a landmine removal team!
Yeah. Look, Artemis, I'll be your prophet so long as God destroys all who oppose me come November, okay?
Leave.
Get out of my office.
Think about it, Artemis. Grandin for president, leave! All I need is someone halfway respectable. Why is that so hard to find, God?
Do not the worst next prophet of God.
What?
Hi, there. I'm David. I'm here for the interview.
Oh, David, what's your angle? Fame, fortune, political power?
No, well, I want to help people. And if God thinks I can be a prophet, then that's what I must do.
Oh, David, just sign here.
Death? Ow! Hi there, Artemis. I'm just here for David.
Death? Death, death, death. You can't kill this man. He's the next prophet of God.
Nope. He's got a date with the afterlife.
Okay, death, what about this guy? You know, Tony Grandin? Grandin for death?
Nope. He's gonna live to the ripe old age of 108.
Figures.
David, you're coming with me.
Well, if it's my time to die, then that's what I must do.
David, thank you for being so understanding. My Artemis, argh!
I quit. I quit. I quit. God, I quit. What? Oh, God. God, what are you doing down here, ma'am? Nothing. You just quit!
And I can't have employees quit now, I'm the Artemis.
It's in the bad image because I am God. Well, God, I quit because... Because... Well, because humanity is just a colossal waste of space. I mean, they only act for their trivial gains. And the only decent person I found today was carted off by death. God! Humanity is just hopeless. Not even Garrett wanted this job.
Artemis, Garrett didn't want this job because you told him his organs were gonna fall into his legs. Look, let's bring him back here, and the three of us can talk this out.
What? What do you want? I already told you I didn't want the job. And who is she?
Oh, I'm just the maker of heaven and earth.
You mean your...
God, yes.
Who?
Well, why'd you choose me, God? Because, Garrett, I like you. You've got room for growth.
Now, I don't, God. I die painful, and I don't want to die.
Well, we all do things we don't want, Garrett. That's called life.
But the important thing is that we make sacrifices for the greater good. Humanity needs help, Garrett. Humanity needs a prophet.
You have to make sacrifices for the greater good?
I'll make him eat his words! So long as God destroys all who oppose me come November. He's got a date with the afterlife.
Humanity needs help.
But, but, God, I don't, I don't want any, God. I just don't, God, I just don't want it, God. God, I really just don't want that job, Garrett!
Thank you for coming. You are free to leave.
Oh, my sake!
So, God, what about me?
What about you, Artemis? You quit. Well, God, now I gotta find me a new prophet, God, and a new angel, God.
Why don't you make me the prophet?
You? You'd be giving up heaven, Artemis, and being an angel.
I know. But it's like you said, sometimes we have to make sacrifices for the greater good. Humanity needs help, God. Humanity needs a prophet.
Go forward then. Spread the word.
Thanks, God, I will.
Oh, and Artemis, just a hint, avoid the subway station.
Well, I'd like to say, Will, and that was quite a performance. Yeah, if we could just officially just to congratulate you, maybe a picture, we recognize our difference makers and congratulations on third place statewide.
Thank you, sir.
And then, the national performance here. So, Ryan might take a picture, and Jordan, one of the other, get up here. There we go. Okay, thank you guys for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, board member, and I would just like to say one thing about J-Debate over the last four years and pertaining to education, because it's very relevant. In fact, our policy debaters, who we had a team make the top 14 at nationals, discussed public education. I would just like to say, over the last four years, speech and debate has probably been the most educational and most enlightening experience of all of my education throughout high school. Mainly, firstly, just for the social interaction, I've made more friends in this activity than I ever had anywhere else in high school. Secondly, I've discussed issues from nuclear energy to justice in the courtroom to how countries should interact with each other due to resources. I've also listened to debate rounds about how we should handle immigration policies and education policies. So, really, what I'm just kind of bringing up here is, and I'm going to say this going forward, as I plan to help coach not only the Jefferson City debate team, but any, you know, just kind of students who need help in the areas. I will be attending Truman in Kirksville, so they have a team up there as well, that I would always advocate for speech and debate, and I will always advocate in any community for speech and debate, as it has had the most lasting impact on my life. And four years ago, when I first started this, I couldn't do this in any scenario, performing something at this caliber, or even just speaking in front of such a high level of kind of respected authority in a community like the school board. So, I would just like to say that, moving forward, especially with the new two high school splits, that's something that's going to be really important, is just how we handle speech and debate. And because we are so now kind of exalted in the state, and now we're getting national success, that Jefferson City has become, like a staple of Jefferson City education, has become speech and debate, like, just like competitive football and baseball's always been now at speech and debate. So, I would just like to always say that, over the last four years, that I would not be the student I was when I graduated. I wouldn't have been able to get into a great university like Truman without speech and debate. And I would never have, like, been the citizen that I'm going to be in the future without speech and debate. So, I would like to urge you and any other moving forward school boards to always look at speech and debate as not only just an activity where people go and win trophies, but also as an educational, fun, social experiment that I firmly believe all students in high school should experience. I know there are districts around the country that require debate as a requisite. I don't know if that's always the best answer, because I know there are plenty of kids who don't want to go near it, but I do know that this is an activity that should never go swept under the rug. And I'm not trying to imply that it has it all, but it's just something that, if there's any student who is ever struggling with an activity, putting them in speech and debate will benefit them in that activity, whether that's academics, sports, or anything else. So, I would like to say that, in this community, debate should always be held as a very high standard, which it has been since Coach Hart has taken over. Our team has never been this successful. And secondly, that if anyone has any high school aid students coming up through the system, put them into the Jefferson City speech and debate team. Not only will they gain confidence, they'll gain intellect, they'll gain, like, critical thinking skills. It's just a lot of fun. Like, I would not have put up with four years of the kind of work level and just time that I have if it wasn't as fun as it was. So, I wanted to thank you guys for four years of continued service to the community and to the educational system. I would like to thank you guys all, because I had a very enlightening time in high school, and I would just like to say that I appreciate you guys letting me come in here and perform today. So, thank you.
Will, thank you.
Literally, Will was good at persuading a poor student.
Absolutely. I might just add, I appreciate you sharing that and the challenge that Jordan gave there last fall to raise the bars. We're trying to raise the bar, as the banner states there in the back in everything we do. So, appreciate, great job with that, and we see it as a vital part of the educational experience here, not only in the classroom, but outside the classroom as well. So, thank you, guys.
He also may be one of the sharpest dressed in here.
Great comments, great performance. Thank you for all of that information. Reports and communications, superintendent update from Dr. Linsky.
Yes, I'll just touch on a couple things here. I know we have, under Old Business, a boundary line update later on, so I'll save my comments there. We do have July 19 scheduled for the next committee meeting with the boundary line committee, which I'll get into more detail later about that with the scenario. So, just want to kind of just touch on the, a couple things on the building project. And I know the bids and where we are on a timeline, as we knew from the beginning, that it was a tight timeline, but we're on schedule and we're under budget, and we're excited about that for not only Captain City High School, but Jefferson City High School as well. So, with the renovations taking place there, I think everyone will be excited to see the progress there. If anyone's ever gone through a renovation at your house, it can be a challenge, and you have to be patient. And so, this is a major renovation at your house, as in a major renovation in Jefferson City High School. So, we're asking folks to be patient. We're going to try to educate folks along the way, as far as being patient, asking our students to be patient as well, and our staff. It's going to be, the light at the end of the tunnel, we're excited about the outcome. But in the meantime, there will be some challenges to that. So, we're going to ask folks to be patient as we work through that. Well, another thing I want to touch on is, I've met with each of the principals individually, and I've had some great meetings. And just as far as with the direction where we're going, I felt like unanimously to become a premier school district, and as our number one goal of making sure that all of our kids can read after above grade level, that we're all on board for that. So, as we work forward, I'm excited about that with the principals and their commitment to that. And as we continue to move forward to become premier, the stronger together, those are pictures of our staff. We're going to do a staff photo again this fall, and that we do believe we are stronger together and trying to make that a reality. So, I just want to share that it's been a great meeting with them individually here during the summer. So, I'll get into more detail about the boundaries, so I won't bore folks with that for a second time, but I will, under, under Old Business, I'll become a boundary line, so that's all I have at this time.
Any questions for Dr. Linsky? Good report, good update, thank you. Thank you. We're all in chief of learning update from Dr. Schindorff.
Thank you. I just want to give you an update on the work that's happening this summer in the office of teaching and learning, and we are preparing for the coming year. And as we think ahead of what is it that we want to get accomplished, we have, we have numerous goals. But two of them that are primary to our office is to improve the behaviors happening with our students across the district and to improve literacy. And when we think about doing that, our goals, I've written on my board in my office, and we stick to it, what we want is consistency and fidelity to a few things. We want that for our curriculum and our resources that we use across the district. We want it for the professional development we offer our staff, and we want it for the implementation of those pieces, of the resources, of the curriculum, and of the professional development. And so, we stay true to those goals. I began the process of looking at the building plans. They've been coming in, and what we're looking for is, if we're going to improve behaviors and we're going to improve literacy, do we see those goals outlined in the building plans? And so, I'm pleased to say that, in the ones that I've reviewed, there's a lot of work being prepared and planned for this coming year around things like our all-in initiative of close reading and providing literacy support, and looking at behavior structures in PBIS and our behavior interventionists, those types of things. So, there's the pieces that we really want to see. I'm pleased to say that they are appearing within the building plans, and so, I'm excited about that. But we also know that, out of our office, we, we want to ensure that consistency and fidelity across the board with our behaviors and our literacy. And so, we have been, we spent the last couple of months working with our coordinators and our coaches and our principals in designing a series of professional development for multiple groups. So, for our new teachers, of course, I've talked to you about that, but also our coaches and our principals, our behavior interventionists, our reading staff, all of them have their own series of professional development. But all of that professional development is unified around, how are we going to get better at student behaviors? How are we going to get better at literacy initiatives across this district? And so, we're excited about the professional development we've put together for them. I hope they're as excited about it. It is not going to be one-time PD. It is a professional development plan that's going to span across the next school year, and it's ongoing. So, we're excited about the plan of developing our people, because we believe that is, in itself, what needs to happen, is to provide the support, not just the stuff, but the support and the tools they need to be good at what they do and helping kids. Questions about that plan?
Thank you, Brian.
Next item, update from CFO, COO, Mr. Hoff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, it's hard to believe, but it's already time to start planning the 2019-20 bus routes. As we're going to open a new high school, that's going to change how we deliver students to and from school. When, when we were figuring the budget on what it was going to cost to operate two high schools, we didn't, we assumed it wasn't going to cost more money to run our daily routes. I think you've heard Frank speak in the past. We run two-tiered routes. The first route costs us about $40,000, $44,000 per route. So, if we ran all single routes, it would be $44,000. But if we can run a second-tier route, it costs us about $4,500, because first student, they pay for the bus, they pay for the driver and their benefits, everything is covered in that first route. So, by adding a second route, all we really have to do is cover the driver's wages and a little bit of wear and tear on their buses. So, it's very advantageous for us to maintain a two-tiered routing system. So, it's very complex right now, but by going to two middle schools and two high schools, it sets up really well to run secondary routes altogether and elementary routes altogether. And it's been a complaint of our elementaries that we're not all on the same starting time. We have some that start at 8:00, we have some 8:15, 8:30, 9:00. So, doing collaboration, doing meetings with principals, it just causes us a lot of issues. So, it's, it's a really good opportunity for us to look at moving all the elementary start times to the same time, moving all the secondary to the same time. It gets us out of the transfer at Simonsen on the street, so we'll still probably have transfers between the middle school and high school, but we can do it on, off city streets. So, just wanted to give you an update that, once we get boundaries set and we have students enrolled, we're going to start working with first student, and they have a first planning solutions, which they, this is what they do, they help districts with rerouting. And so, probably September, we're going to be working really hard on this, October, and we'll probably be coming back in October or November with a recommendation on, on how to change that for the next year. So, we've been through this before. Yes, ma'am?
Are we going to be having public forums about this? Because, as I recall, the last time we discussed this, quite a hot topic with the...
Yes, I think we should, yes.
Yeah, and before anybody tweets out saying that we're changing all the elementary times, nothing anyone would do that, or Philip tomorrow, I'm sure would not put them in the Tribune. But, and I mean, I'm just, seriously, we are going to look at these, and at the end of the day, involve folks in the process. We're stronger together and have as many meetings as we need to, and we will involve them, because we recognize we have some schools that start at 9:00, and we have some schools that start at 8:00. And, you know, if we say all the elementaries at 8:30, or 8:45, or 8:15, or whatever that time is, or 8:00, whatever it may be, we understand that there will need to be folks involved in the process. So, we ensure, if that is, that they will be a part of that process, so.
Got you really used to 194.
Well, not just families and daycares, businesses, absolutely, employers.
For an additional $2 million, we could have them all start at 8:30 by doing away with the two-tiered routes, but I don't think that's what we want to do, so.
No, I don't think so, but...
Definitely need to be having public input, committee work. Yes, definitely.
Thank you for sharing.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Future dates, and you see, look down through there, items A through H, a couple of important ones to bring your attention to. Number one, the diversity training, that's the third of three. Third of three, diversity training, Friday, August 3. Make sure that everybody's got that on their calendar, that's an important item.
I don't think I did one and two.
You did one and two?
I don't think I did one and two.
No.
Okay, so it's okay to do three?
Yeah, we're looking at some, as far as a possible makeup at the time.
Gotcha.
For those, we're just looking at our options on that to consider, so we'll communicate that with you.
Thank you.
There's also a letter G, that September 11th is a Tuesday. It is the 11th, but it should have Tuesday, September 11th.
Previously discussed and approved that. Yeah, another one I would draw your attention to is the opening session, Monday, the 13th. That's always a good time for all of us to be there. A lot of good energy, welcome the staff back, and look forward to that, so.
Absolutely.
We've gone to Old Business, item A, milk bids, Ms. Dana Duroff, Director of School Nutrition Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll just kind of reiterate a little bit. We went out for dairy bids, we received three. The first one couldn't deliver daily, so that kind of took them out. And then, the other two bids were received and met the requirements. But at the last board meeting on June 25th, we kind of talked about this and tabled the discussion to further notice. Based on your recommendations, I sent some questions to the two providers, and some of the questions were, I just asked for a list of school districts who had contracted with the bidders for dairy products in the past five years.
welcome the staff back, and look forward to that, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Moving on to old business, item A, milk bids, Ms. Dana Duroff, Director of School Nutrition Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll just kind of reiterate a little bit, we went out for dairy bids, we received three, the first one couldn't deliver daily, so that kind of took them out, and then the other two bids were received and met the requirements. But at the last board meeting on June 25th, we kind of talked about this and tabled the discussion to further notice. Based on your recommendations, I sent some questions to the two providers, and some of the questions were, I just asked for a list of school districts who had contracted with the bidders for dairy products in the past five years and who are currently contracting with them. I received several from, several school districts from Essential Dairy and one or two from Graves, but also received some health facilities that were receiving dairy products from them. I asked, the milk that would be distributed to Jeff City Public School buildings will come from what location? Of course, Central Dairy said Jefferson City, Graves said that they would be coming from St. Louis, and with some research, the product is actually going to be produced in Indiana, and so, and then brought to the St. Louis facility, and then brought to Jeff City. Some of the other questions, what is your process for delivering daily to each Jeff City Public School site? And they both gave me a process that I think would work. What procedures are in place to ensure Jeff City Public School receives the required number of cartons of milk in the variety requested daily? They were both able to assure me that they would be able to provide those products. How will you ensure that milk will be delivered well before its expiration date? They both said that they could do that. It may take a few more days coming from St. Louis, but we should still get it within time to serve and not have it expired. How would you handle milk that expires? Does the district receive credit for those items? Will the items be replaced? Or just kind of generally explain the process? Because milk will tend to, if it's in the back of the cooler or something, it will be expired, or have an off flavor and the kids won't want it. They both assured me that they would either replace the products or they would issue a credit for those products that have expired. Trying to think, I did get some references from Graves. I called today three of the facilities that are healthcare facilities, none of them actually received milk in the carton, they get all of their dairy products through Graves and it's delivered in time and fine, but they are purchasing the gallons based on it being a health facility. Any questions for me?
Question for Dana?
I just want to reiterate that when we put the bid out, it was a cost-based bid, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Linsky, is the administration's recommendation unchanged?
I believe that's correct, I believe the same as last, on the 25th with many...
At the last meeting, we did have a contract that was Cal Graves had signed, it was kind of the contract page, and you all had asked if the legal would look at it. He has looked at it and has written a more formal contract page, so I would ask Graves if you all approve that they've signed that, be kind of contingent on approval.
Did we have a copy of that in our board tack?
There's one right there.
This is over here.
Yeah, we just got it today, so it was...
So this is a revised contract wording, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
To what has been presented previously?
Right.
Okay.
Right, it's just rewritten and a more formal.
Okay. And just to clarify, it does include the, it does include the requirements that if the vendor fails to deliver, then there is recovery for the district in regards to the federal reimbursement, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that paragraph's still in there.
Okay.
Let me get details of how we can recover that, so it just is a more formal document with mostly the same terms, just different term.
Okay.
Any other information to share, Dana?
No.
Thank you for going back to give that information.
Yes, we appreciate that, doing a little additional diligence, I know that several members had questions a couple of weeks ago when we met, so we appreciate the extra length work on that.
I appear to have missed a thought, I was not here for that.
I'm sorry, missed.
We should have copied that, she's making copies, so we can wait.
You just wrote there quickly?
I've read the first page, I haven't read the second.
So at this point, if you're looking for, as you were on the 25th, you're looking for action to approve, correct?
Yes, correct.
So we have staff recommendation, Dr. Linsky supports that, that remains unchanged, Graves is the low bidder, and it's a cost-based bid, as Ms. Radden mentioned, it sounds like any questions or concerns that you all, as the program management folks may have had in terms of delivery has been addressed, you've asked and you've answered that, so at this point, I would look for a motion to approve the contract as recommended.
I will note to approve the contract as amended, I would like to review the contract, but I don't believe that necessarily needs to be subject to my review.
I agree with that as well, I mean, I would like to review the contract before I approve it.
I think that's...
We just got...
I think that's correct.
I think we should have a moment before we call for that vote.
I think so. Thank you for that motion and a second, and we'll take a couple of minutes to review.
Are we in the phase for discussions?
We are.
Why was this so complex? Why was this such an issue? If you don't mind me asking.
I've been concerned when you move from a company that we've done business with for forty-some years, and it's, the process is pretty seamless. To move to a new vendor who have shown some issues in the past on being able to deliver the actual products that we want when we want them, without them having to be delivered later in the day. Because for milk, if you don't have, I can't claim reimbursement, and you're talking a lot of money that will affect the lunch and breakfast programs in a negative way. And so I wanted to be sure that we can, that this can be provided and it can be done in the fashion we're used to.
And that's a daily reimbursement of twenty-one thousand dollars?
Yes.
However many meals we don't get reimbursement for, and so I just took our federal reimbursement divided by seventy-four days, the average is twenty-one thousand dollars, so sometimes it may be more, sometimes it may be less.
Correct.
We're estimating that's what it would be on the day that we didn't just receive delivery.
But that's, I'd like to follow up on the question I asked, you know, if you submit for review a bid that is included as such that it is only based upon price, you tie our hands in our discussion about what else can be included. And so, you know, not being critical, but if the price is low, we go if the price is low, if that's what the contract says, and I think that we should stick to that and not have any discussion with the phrase.
Any other points that haven't been made?
I think the question was, as a board, we also wanted to verify that it could, that they could produce, like you said, being a new vendor and not having experience with a new vendor in this particular area for over forty years, you just want to make sure that your children don't show up and there's no milk, I mean, that's...
Correct.
So we just also wanted to feel like we were doing some due diligence, I think, on our part on questioning, you know, if you're making the recommendation and that was the low bid, and we have in the contract some sort of clause for non-performance, then I'm comfortable with that.
I think the other, another question was also, just in fairness to you, also about the product, I mean, where the product was going to be produced, the processing plant location, not knowing, I mean, obviously knowing where Central Dairy is located, but not knowing where the facility or production site was going to be for the other supplier, so I think that was the other question.
Imported Mexican milk?
Right.
Yeah, dairy having a limited shelf life, you know, so that was the other question we had.
So appreciate everybody's patience as we work through this, but this process, we take away some things that we learn from and keep moving ahead, but it sounds like, like you said, the questions have been answered, and so we have a motion and a second, and so if you have any other additional points, are you ready for the vote?
Right.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Scott, we've got you recorded.
Steve, I apologize, I was out of the room, who made the first and who made the second?
It was Rich paid the primary, and Laurel I second.
Thank you. And Scott, I have you as nay, thank you.
Thank you.
Contract approved, thanks for your work on this, Dana.
Thank you.
Moving on, next item of business under old business, the boundary line update, back to you, Dr. Hoff.
Yes, we've talked about numerous times here, and basically, the first time as an agenda item, folks had an opportunity during the open forum to discuss, no one took us up on that, to discuss that during that time as an agenda item, which is kind of an update where we are, I gave you an update last month, we do have scheduled, I shared earlier my report for July 19th for our next committee meeting, I believe at six o'clock at the Miller Center, which is open to the public, but the committee meeting on the 19th. So just basically, we had met with the committee, the committee was comfortable moving forward with the three scenarios that I'll share with you, and then we had two community-wide town hall meetings, one at Lewis and Clark and one at Thomas Jefferson. And basically, we asked the folks that attended to poke holes, pros and cons to each of the scenarios of the three scenarios. As we started out originally, and the original goals for this was to keep parity enrollment size similar between the two, similar as was in 1993 when the both middle schools were approved and built, they wanted to keep the same enrollment. Over the last twenty-five years, they have remained relatively close enrollment-wise. The poverty-wise, ensuring that we don't have the haves and the have-nots, the poverty has remained relatively close over the years. This year, I believe, this last school year, Thomas Jefferson was fifty-four percent of the students were in poverty, and fifty-eight percent at Lewis and Clark. The prior year to that, it was reversed, Thomas Jefferson was fifty-eight percent, Lewis and Clark was fifty-four. The year before, Lewis and Clark was higher. I think over twenty-five years, it would be safe to say that Lewis and Clark has been a little bit higher, but it has been very, very close over the time. So those were two things at the beginning. Once we started meeting at the beginning, and it became very apparent of not splitting our students as far as splitting their schools, right now, if your student attends Thorpe Gordon, once they finish fifth grade and go into sixth grade, half the students go to Thomas Jefferson and half the kids go to Lewis and Clark. That's something that we would like to try to eliminate if possible, just because, folks, you make friends with your classmates through fifth grade, that critical age of the middle school age, of how important that is in keeping their friends. We wanted to, as a goal, to try to eliminate from splitting any of our schools. We also want to just look at the location of Capital City High School, we'd like it to be located within the boundaries that it serves. That is something that we communicated when we campaigned for a proposition J plus C, that we anticipated some boundary line tweaks, because the location of Capital City High School, which is on Mission Drive and 179, is within Cedar Hill or Lewis and Clark's boundary lines, and we communicated that Lewis and Clark would primarily feed Jefferson City High School, and Thomas Jefferson would feed Capital City High School. So that was a, we'd like to have the location of it located within the area that it serves. So that was an important part of that. So that kind of guided us throughout, in addition to the enrollment and the poverty, as far as with those additional goals that we kind of talked about. So I want to bring up here, and Jason has, this is on our district website, that anybody has access to, when you go to, go back to homepage, on the left here, if you scroll down, boundary committee, clicks on here, and it has the three scenarios, the final boundary committee scenarios that we're looking at, and this is, below that has a lot of the other scenarios that we looked at, it has copies of our maps. I would right now like to go to, click on option C, and this is our current, scroll down to the map if you would, Jason, this is our current school district boundaries. Could you hit the minus button, would... Well, that didn't do us much. That's all right, I'm just going to, go ahead and scroll back along. It basically goes out to, from Hold Summit to Centertown, to the, here's the Osage River, going to Lynn this way, goes south to Fatima, this right here is a part of Moral Heights. In the blue is basically our Lewis and Clark boundary line, and in the pink is our Thomas Jefferson boundary line. So those are the current boundary lines that we have, and as you can see geographically, it goes on west here to Centertown, it's not included, that's what I was hoping you could see. Would you go back, Jason, just to our About Us and our district maps, so we can see of the elementary boundary lines? If you go to our district main webpage, okay, and About Us, so you can come here to About Us, and it'll go to our district maps. There we go, thank you. And then scroll down, here's our district map. And this is broken down by elementary school, so you can just see, and here's where... I didn't do that, did I? Okay. I think I touched it. But here you can see, out to Centertown to the west, someone said this looks like Alaskan, you got the Boot Hill of Italy, here, you can kind of Florida, you might want to look at it. But this is our district boundary lines, because the river, that's why we, I've said many times, we don't have a due north, because of the way the river runs and the hills and hollers, so we had a lot of questions on, why don't you just fix all this and just make them straight and so forth? That's a lot easier said than done. I kidded about Western Kansas and counties and straight due north and so forth, that we don't have that, and so, and the city's grown. You have, you know, West Elementary that sits right here, but our district goes farther west, but we've grown around as a community. North is still here in the Hold Summit, southeast, where south is included, you can see our district goes farther south than that. So anyway, looking at these lines, I think the discussion was looking at our middle school and high school with our boundary lines, meeting back with our community, and one of the questions that was discussed, why don't you fix the elementary boundary lines? Because they're not perfect, okay? And I'm not going to say they're perfect, and it's something that we are going to, we were tasked with getting the boundary lines, so when in the fall of nineteen, we've had approximately thirty-five, as far as with community-wide discussions, and then numerous other communications about boundary lines, and it is a hot topic, it's an emotional topic, and we understand that, because where you send your kids to school, and our goal is, it doesn't matter where you send your child to an elementary school, that it's a great education. With that being said, we recognize there are traditions, there are, well, I went here and my kids, and I want my kids to go here, et cetera, my grandmother was a teacher here, et cetera. We understand all those, and those are real, and we don't want to negate any of those emotions that go along with that. So at the end of the day, we want all eleven schools to raise the bar, that it doesn't matter where you send your kids, that it's a quality education. But as we work through that, the emotions got to come out. So when we met at Lewis and Clark and we met at Thomas Jefferson, honestly, I think at Lewis and Clark, when we met there, it was more kind of an educational feeling, folks, and trying to understand what the scenarios involved. When we were at Thomas Jefferson, I think there was a little more emotions, there was a little more concern from Cedar Hill parents. Cedar Hill, which we'll look at here, if you could scroll in a little bit, Jason, or hit the plus, please. Okay, this right here, the dark here, this is Cedar Hill, and right here is the location of Capital City High School. Okay, so right now, this is Cedar Hill, and Cedar Hill feeds to Lewis and Clark, which is located over here. Okay, so some of the questions were, what are you going to fix, excuse me, we live out on, is it C? We live out on C, and we're a lot closer to TJ, are you going to fix that? In 1993, the decision was made to try to keep parity enrollment and the poverty of ensuring trying to, very similar between the two, and that's why, because they're literally, I've had folks say to me, well, we've been screwed for twenty-five years, are you going to fix it now? And I said, well, we're trying to work through this. So it's a very delicate, very delicate topic, but the location of Capital City High School is right here, which is within Cedar Hill, which Cedar Hill feeds Lewis and Clark. So that was, one of the goals was to try to have the location of this to be within Thomas Jefferson, and that's what we shared when we campaigned, that we anticipated some tweaks, so it... we shared when we campaigned, that we anticipated some tweaks, so it would be located within the, the, the location of where that school serves. Instead of driving by that school to go to Jefferson City High School, we'd like it located within those boundary lines. So, and we own, some questions, well, that brought back some emotions of, well, why, why did you build it there? Well, we owned the land. It was paid for. And so, before you go buy something new, you probably look in your own house, own finances, can we do it with what we have? Well, we own that. And so, we felt it was the best side, one hundred and fourteen acres. There are permission drives, they're doing, it's going to be awesome, but we got to work through with the boundaries. So, the three scenarios, I want to go back, and I want to just kind of touch on those. The first scenario is scenario A, and it is basically, if you'll click on it, Jason, click here. Let's go to the map of it if we can. Okay, maybe, can you minus, minus it one time? Okay, so, the, did I just?
We're dropping like flies.
We're dropping like flies, okay. So, right here, this is Cedar Hill, okay? And this part from the previous map was a part of it. And so, Capital City High School is right here. And so, basically, this comes down to include this part, becomes a part of South Elementary, and goes to TJ, which would be going to Capital City High School. And this over here would continue to go to Lewis and Gordon and Jefferson City High School. The questions with regards to, how many students were there? Thirty-seven students. We have verified through three elements of number one, through our transportation, through Preston, who was the demographer, and three, our doctor in the house, Brian Shendrill, as far as looking at by streets. The thirty-seven was thirty-seven elementary students. There were ten secondary students, for a total of forty-seven, of our current K through twelve students, that it would impact that live in this area, forty-seven K through twelve. Now, they're junior in high school, in two years, they're going to be gone, so it's not going to matter. But it can kind of give you an idea of forty-seven students that would be impacted, that have currently been attending Cedar Hill, that would go to South eventually down the road. So, we felt a lot of questions about, so I started in kindergarten, and I'm going to have to switch schools. We're going to have a grace period. And that grace period, if you start at Cedar Hill, you will finish at Cedar Hill. You're going to stay with your friends and your classmates. If you have a kindergartner there, and you have a four-year-old, a two-year-old, a newborn, and one on the way, the kindergartner that's going there was attending Cedar Hill School, they will finish out, their siblings will finish out, will go through, when the fifth grader becomes sixth grade, then these others would be moving, but they could apply for special permission. We have special permission now. And we consider those on a case-by-case. We're trying to tighten this a little bit because of athletics in high schools and recruiting, and we've talked at Columbia, and with, with Rockbridge, and Battle, and Hickman, of all the things that they went through, and recruiting, and all those, there's just a lot of parts to it. So, we want to make sure we have a tight process, so folks can, because there are scenarios that have special permission, that it needs to be green. And we're going to look at those on a case-by-case basis as we work through that. So, scenario A basically moves this portion from Cedar Hill into South, in which would, South is a part of Thomas Jefferson, and would be a part of Capital City High School, and we'd have a grace period with that. Okay? You guys on this board have any questions here? This is on scenario A.
I want to touch on Thorpe, too.
And Thorpe, thank you, Jason. So, over here, Thorpe Gordon, could you go back to the middle school, or just go to option C? Could you do that, please?
Here, this is, you can see the line there.
Yeah, so Thorpe is this pink, okay? This portion right here of Thorpe Gordon in this pink, and here's a dotted blue and yellow Michigan line. Basically, these folks here, currently, if you go to Thorpe Gordon, if you live right here, once you get to middle school age, you go to Thomas Jefferson. And if you live in the rest of Thorpe, you go to Lewis and Clark. Under all three scenarios of A, B, and C, we're saying, if you go, if you're in Thorpe, all of Thorpe will go to Lewis and Clark and Jefferson City High School. We met with the Thorpe Gordon parents, they all unanimously was like, well, yeah, well, that makes sense. We'll have a grace period, though, if they've attended through sixth grade or whatever, they can stay with their friends if they so choose, on a grace period with their fan, with their friends throughout middle school and high school. And we'll look at each of those, those scenarios. So, that is a part of scenario A, B, and C. A is the one that's probably the most controversial, because it does affect moving a portion of Cedar Hill to South Elementary, which then would be going to Thomas Jefferson. Okay, so that's scenario A. Okay, let's go to scenario B. Okay, scenario B is the exact same line here in a part of Cedar Hill, except it does not go in effect until they get to middle school. So, Cedar Hill lines would stay the same, but if I lived in this portion of pink, once I got to the middle school age, I would then attend Thomas Jefferson and Capital City High School. That's really the only difference on that. We would have a grace period on that as well, use some common sense as we go through that. Thorpe Gordon is also, again, as I mentioned, all of Thorpe Gordon will go to, to Lewis and Clark and Jefferson City High School. Okay, that's scenario B. Any questions on that? Okay, scenario C is basically keeping our boundary lines as they are, except, as I mentioned, all of Thorpe Gordon would be attending Lewis and Clark and Jefferson City High School. The location of Capital City High School would be within Cedar Hill's lines, and would be within Lewis and Clark's boundaries, even though it's serving the pink. So, it's in a sense, you're busing to something that's not located within its geographic area. That's scenario C. Okay, and some were of, okay, well, if you're not fixing the elementary lines now, why don't you just do that, and that'll pass some time until we can, you know, address all the elementaries? I mean, there's a lot of different parts to that. So, those scenarios, A, B, and C, I'm going to meet back with the boundary line committee on a week from Thursday, the nineteenth. And from there, if they're comfortable moving forward, with then coming back to the board, looking at, as far as readings, giving folks an opportunity, discussing at coffees, et cetera. We had said we want to have a recommendation by August of this year, so folks should have at least one year notice to go into effect, August of nineteen. That's when Capital City High School will open up. It may be September. I think we've done this right. I think we've been diligent about it. We'd rather do it right than to rush it and ask for your final recommendation next month. I think we need another month. But I think we've, we've heard most of comments. I haven't had any dead cats in my mailbox yet, so I haven't had to, with folks. But if you guys have any questions on any of these scenarios, A, B, and C?
Just to clarify, that if we make a decision, if we take an upper action in September, then, then folks would have two opportunities. They'll have the opportunity to speak to that agenda item at the August meeting, and then at the September.
Right, as well as tonight. It was an agenda item tonight. But yes, they would have opportunities. And I would like to thank, if anything, folks have felt that they've had an opportunity to, to voice their concerns, I would hope, but you never know. So, I just want to give you an update. I'm not asking for a final, I'm not recommending, I just want to give you an update, see if you guys have any questions for me. I'll report back after our committee. And if the committee's comfortable, and myself, as far as bringing one of those three to you, or we may not, we may have a, you know, a next reading here in August, or we may have three narrowed down to two possibly. We'll just see when we get back with that. Okay, that's it. Unless you've got any other questions, it's all I've got. Thank you. I don't know why I stood up. I guess that's why I didn't need to.
Just wanted to give you the space.
I guess so.
That's right. That's right. Form work. Moving on, new business, grocery and non-grocery bids. Dana, the four is yours now.
We went out for produce and grocery and non-grocery items. Bids were received from two distributors, Coles Wholesale and Graves Foods. The RFP contained five hundred and sixty-four items. One item was removed due to the manufacturer discontinued the product. Actually, they just discontinued a certain flavor, so we took that item out. The produce contained eighty-seven items. There were nineteen items that I added this year for the fresh fruit and vegetable program. Those, they're kind of some odd-type fruits and vegetables. Basically, that program is intended to expose kids to different types of fruits or vegetables that they normally would not get. And so, those weren't on the bid in the past, and so I wanted to try and get a, or a price for them to know whether I wanted to purchase those items or not. At this time, nine of those items are still being evaluated for if we want to proceed with them or not.
Nine of the nineteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, then the bids were evaluated. So, based on the expected velocity and student choice, receipt of USDA donated foods, or any other unforeseen occurrences, I have the following as an estimated dollar value. So, I request to award the bid as follows. For produce, the vendor Graves Foods, we get forty-seven line items, estimated at a hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Coles Wholesale would get thirty-one line items, in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. So, it's a total of the seventy-eight line items, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and forty-eight cents is what we expect to spend on produce. The grocery itself would be grocery or non-grocery items, the paper products and such. Graves Foods would get two hundred and twenty-eight line items, with an estimated yearly cost of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-five cents. And Coles Wholesale would get three hundred and thirty-five items, six hundred and forty-seven dollars, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirteen cents, for a total of the five hundred and sixty-three items, estimated at a million, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and eight cents. So, I'm asking for your approval to award those bids.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, what, like dragon fruit or mango, or what, what, what are these items that we're going to ask these children to try? I mean, I'm just curious.
Well, they're, they're different types of fruit that are maybe some exotic-type fruits, things they're not normally going to get to try.
Like dragon fruit?
Yes, and I, exactly.
Well, I mean, that's the funniest-looking thing in the produce section I ever saw.
It is. And it's just, I put in to maybe offer it one time throughout the year, just to give them some exposure. And then, we've worked up some, like, note cards for, to distribute also with the teachers, so that it can kind of explain where those items come from, and, you know, just an exposure-type thing.
I was just curious.
I think in our previous bids, that we've asked our providers of these products to have them in stock, and on the shelf, and available.
Yes.
Were we going to ask them for these exotic things that they?
No, no. Both vendors, I've seen where they have, it's considered a specialty item, and so you need to give them at least two weeks' notice to provide those. So, that, that's my plan.
Do we have experience with both of these vendors?
Yes.
As far as historical experience?
Yes.
In terms of the process of metering out between the different vendors, does that create, is that, in your experience, I mean, is that creating a, an undue burden, or, or a significant amount of additional work to be able to do it that way? I mean, I, obviously, it would be, it's, it's efficient to go with one particular vendor, but I guess my question is, is, I mean, is it, are we getting the best value for the district, and, and are we taking into account the additional work that it takes to be able to do that?
It is additional work, because we're ordering from two different vendors. We have the SIV three program that we used in order to take these bids. Also, we'll work with both vendors that, well, we're going to start a new process, so I want my managers to be able to order at the school level, instead of sending us paper copies. However, they will just enter their order, the system will determine which vendor got the, got the product, and the orders will may, be made that way. So, it would still just be us ordering one time now, instead of this past school year, where we had to split the orders in half and determine who to order from.
It's a new software.
It's a new software.
Smart decision.
You cut the learning curve.
Yes. Yes, it will also track inventory in my buildings, as well as what's in our warehouse. And our warehouse is our USDA donated foods. So, that'd be more of a tracking, rather than personally going in and taking an inventory once a month.
So, it would be fair to say you should have improved efficiencies over what you had even with two?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, Dana, how do you take care of one of the vendors who's been awarded one of them tonight, who's averaging over twenty misfires every month, when they don't produce something that's supposed to be there? How do we, how do we handle that, when the, the one of the people we're voting tonight is awarded an average of over twenty a month, but they don't produce on? How do we handle that?
Well, what we've done in this past year is just work with the vendor on, you know, can you provide this item? If you cannot, then we want to award it to the second bid. And that's, that's worked, pretty much. If we're short on all the items that is in the bid, that we can defer it to the next bidder.
So, if they constantly, every month, are coming up with over twenty things not showing up, are we, do we then can all avoid that contract as well?
Well, if the items never show up, yes, we would need to award them to the next vendor. What's happened this past year is sometimes it may not be there on the delivery truck, but it may be delivered later in the day.
After it might already been on the menu for something that takes?
Typically, our orders come in a few days ahead of what's going to be served, so we're not depending on delivery for something that we're going to serve on that same day.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just making sure.
Mm-hmm.
Questions, Scott? Any other points, questions for Dana? Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All in favor, say nay. Or any opposed, say nay. Very good. Contracts are approved. Thank you, Dana. Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, Dana.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, friends, it comes to the item on the agenda that's Laurel's favorite.
All right. Can I speak up at all to my audience?
We ask that, that you continue your comments to public comment at that particular point on the agenda. We need to be able to move on with the board's business. But you are certainly welcome to contact any of us after the meeting is concluded, or members of the administration.
Okay, so the only reason I'm confused is because we didn't, I don't know if it counted, and it came out totally different, so that's why I'm going to review.
Well, we appreciate you coming this evening, and again, while we need to move on and conduct business, but you're certainly welcome to contact after.
Sorry, I didn't know.
Oh, no, you're fine, certainly. You don't know if you don't ask it. That's fine.
Motion to suspend open to enter into closed meeting by roll call vote pursuant to Chapter Six, Ten, Point Zero Two One of the revised statutes in Missouri, Section One, Legal Actions, Causes of Action or Litigation, and One, Legal Actions, oh, that's on there twice, involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications, thirteen individually identifiable personnel records, performance rating or record pertaining to employees, and fourteen records which are protected from disclosure by law.
Action by roll call vote. Thank you, Rich. We're trying to stop you. One of you's there.
Yeah.
Get it in there twice.
Um, sorry.
Rachel?
Lindsay?
Yes.
Laurel? Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ken?
And?
Scott?
Yeah.
Okay.